Welcome, everybody, to March 9, 2021, Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Marty Aikens. I'm the chairman. Mr. Cavais is our vice chairman. Board members, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Hemel. Mr. Lee is here. Where is he?
To Chin.
Mr. Chin. Chin, Mr. Lee. What the hell am I doing?
Yeah, I think he's trying to get him.
He just made point.
Log out?
Yeah, he logged out because he's trying to figure out how to get his audio.
All right. So let's go through this until he logs back in and we can do those cases. We got a few things we can do with the five of us right now. If I could, Mr. Cavais, could you make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of 12, 223, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from February 23rd.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Now, we have some old business here. I want to see if anyone's here. Is anyone here from six to eight Oak Colony Ave? Six, eight Oak Colony Ave, raise your hand, make a flag. Start, was it start nine?
Yes.
Start nine? Is there anyone here for Oak Colony Ave? Mr. Chin? Are you here?
He is now.
Here's Russell. All right, I got it. No one's here? Mr. Cavais, this is like two years old. The property's been auctioned. There's no applicant, no more, on this case. If I could, could we make a motion, motion to deny this project, please?
Mr. Chairman, it matter number 20-36, RL Estate Development LLC, for a variance and abolish the existing structure, construct a new seven-unit residential building on the premises numbered six-eight Oak Colony Avenue, I make a motion to deny the variance.
I deny the variance because there is no applicant in front of us.
I think agree.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, could I have, yeah, I want, who? No, he can't, he can't talk. There's no one talking on this. There's, there's no one here to talk on it because the, the property's probably going to come back to us, but since it's already over and the applicant isn't here and we've had this two years. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Russell?
He's gone again.
All right, put Mr. Hemel in, please.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Marty Aikens?
Yes. CBA case number, old business, 2088, Paul Pinto for variance to construct an addition on the premise number 1026. East Street. Where are we on this, guys? Mr. Pinto, are you here?
Yes, Mr. Aikens.
Yeah. Where are we on this?
We're, we've provided over previous surveys that were requested from the last meeting. I think that was shared with the committee. And we're still seeking sides, side variance. I have Benny Burr on the line as well, too.
But, but we, we don't know about that road yet. We still, you were supposed to find out if that road is private or public. You said, I thought you said you were going to take care of that before this meeting.
Yeah, no, we provided, I'm sorry, Mr. Aikens. We, we provided back surveys as far as we can go. We've got title search. Everything that we pulled up shows private way. And I think the, the request was that Mr. McCarthy had, had potentially something else.
Well, that's what we're going to have to do because I'm hearing a lot different. I'm hearing someone's going to sell that one foot of land to other neighbors. There's going to be fights down there. That's what I understand. But, Mr. McCarthy, could you please tell us what's going on here?
Yeah, I wish I knew too, Marty. Mr. Chairman, there's been a lot of back and forth in the last 48 hours between the owner, Sean Farrell, I think Mr. Pinto, I think the people in the cul-de-sac. And the spite line and the ownership is up in the air in regards to, I want to make, still want to make sure that that spite line is formally deeded to Mr. Farrell. It does hinge a lot in regards to Mr. Pinto's thoughts on moving the fence over. So there's still, outside of your job, which is the zoning job and Mr. Pinto's addition, there's still a lot of factors that are completely confusing to me over there in regards to who's going to end up with what. And it's still, there's nothing, there's nothing, the cement hasn't dried yet, Marty. So I don't know what to say in regards to that. All I know is that I'm still trying to get the two parties together to come up with some type of agreement in regards to that private way, which is fine with the city for both of them to utilize, but I still don't think they've gotten together.
So, but do we know who owns that piece of property, Mr. McCarthy?
I, I haven't seen any deed in regards to that foot spite line. And I, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Ray Dell, maybe you could bring something into this. You were saying something about, you were looking up and I said, wait for the meeting to talk.
Yeah, I tried to, tried to do a, a, a search through the registry of deeds to try and find ownership of the spite line. I, I just saw the applicant have his hand up. Do you, you have, have you seen a deed on this, Mr. Pinto, that, that shows that there's ownership of the spite line?
Yeah, so, so first off, I, I'd like to, to stop using these, these terms, spite line. It's lot six. It was subdivided back in 2008. I provided the subdivision plan to the committee. I'm happy to bring it up again here. That, that was originally part of the rectory's property. That's where it was deeded. It was subdivided as lot six and remained that, right? And then every other lot was sold off and that one was not, as well as parcel one. Now, with regard to what we're seeking still today, right? Our, our request is for variance from the, the, the right side or left side, whatever way you're looking at it, of the private way. And it's for side yard variance. It, it is not impacted by that fence. I think, Mr. McCarthy, you had a discussion as well today with Mr. Fleming. And, and the concern that was brought up was, am I going to go put a fence up against lot six? I, I said I would not. I'm okay with, we want to put a condition on that. That, that's not going to have a fence put up on lot six. But there was never any question of, of that, right? And, and we've gone back, we've pulled, pulled every record we can to delineate that, that private way. And I also have, if you need, I've got timelines that can show all of the deeds that refer back to that being split out in lot six, as well as prior to the subdivision. Like to add to that.
What, what, can you tell me when that deed was dated? I just want to, I was just trying to look it up myself and I couldn't find it.
Which, which one are you talking about?
Lot six, lot six.
Shows the deed of ownership of lot six. I can't find anything that shows lot six.
Yeah, because it was subdivided, sorry. It was subdivided in 2006.
In the deeds. Yeah, that's what, that's my, I pulled up that deed that shows the transfer of ownership for, for or the, the lot that you're trying to purchase, not lot six, the other one there, whatever you're calling that.
Parcel one.
Parcel one. I show parcel one, but I can't find anything for, that references this lot six.
Well, if, if it's okay, it's okay. I share a screen. I can show up, I can pull up. I have a, some stuff I put together, if that helps.
And where did you get this from?
These are all from the registry of deeds. I also have.
I don't know why we couldn't find it because I, yeah.
I also have the subdivision plan, right? Because that's what's filed. It's the subdivision plan, which, which illustrates lot six. But prior to it becoming lot six, it was part of.
Lot four.
No. Prior to becoming lot six, it would have been part of a prior subdivision, which would have been called lot two and lot one. And when lot two, lot, lot one was subdivided, it would have created the further subdivision, which is now called lot six. But I, I believe Benny, my, my, my architect had a comment that, that probably would help clarify.
Right. You have two front, you have a, if, if that's a street, if that's a street. Right, Mr. Dubey, isn't that two front, front setbacks?
If you, that would be a front.
Both fronts, right?
Oh, then it would be front.
Right, so it'd be two front, front yard setbacks, 25 feet.
He still has to repair it.
No, I know, I know. I'm just saying, but if, if the streets ever, who knows? I, I don't know if the city owns it. Are they on, uh, uh, who? I don't know. I don't know. So you're saying lot six, that's a private street then?
No, no, lot six is the sliver, Marty.
The sliver there. I see the sliver on lot six. But then, then lot, lot five, but no, where am I here? Lot, lot one, right?
Parcel one supposedly acquired lot six at some.
Right.
That's what you're, you're telling us. I mean, it sounds like you're.
I got the original here that, that's, you know, I just, I got, you know, one, two, three, four, five.
Sounds like you have a wonderful land court decision.
No lot six on this.
Does it, does it help, Mr. Redell, if I, if I pull up the screen and, and and have it so everybody's seeing at the same time what we're talking about?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the plans that you sent over the other day. If that's what you're going to share. I'm looking at the same thing. I'm, I'm.
Those are the same ones we have. We have.
Distinct ownership change where it goes from, you know, if I look at the survey you sent over for the registry plan, which showed the two plots of land. So, right, you got lot one, lot two, and parcel one, right? And then it changes over.
Or to five, on the other side.
That, that's back from.
That's where that one foot comes from, four and five.
But then it changes over, Mr. Redell, you were saying, I'm sorry, you were saying it changes over from. That changes, yeah, so in 2006, that changes into this five, this six parcels, I mean, six lots plus parcel one. And then, and then you, and then we have the, you know, the most recent, which I, I can't find the ownership being attached to parcel one, is what I'm struggling with.
Oh, that was September, that was September of 2007, right?
Yeah, but if you go pull up that land court decision, there's no reference of lot six being attached to parcel one.
It's not. It's two separate, it's two separate transactions, Mr. Redell. Or two separate lots, but they're, they're being transacted as one, one joint transaction.
No.
There, there's two, there's, lot six has never been deeded to anybody because it was part of the original, the subdivision, right? And then parcel one.
But who owns it? Who owns it? It has to be deeded to somebody.
SPS still owned it from their original subdivision.
I agree.
So they deeded it to themselves?
No. When they sub, when they subdivided the parcel that they bought from the church.
Yep.
He retained that piece.
Yeah.
And then he broke the other lots out. He sold all the other lots out and retained that.
Then why wouldn't it be deeded somewhere?
Because he, he retained it. He didn't, he doesn't need to deed it.
But he don't own nothing else here, right?
That's right. It's, it's true. He doesn't, but he owns that one foot wide script.
Then why, if you own something, you wouldn't have a deed, so you pay taxes on it?
He also owns parcel one.
You can own whatever you want.
Right, but you got to deed it somewhere to say you own.
No, you don't have to deed it.
No, no, it's what's, it's what's left from the original.
Right.
Lot one.
Yeah.
So there would be no deed out.
Take everything else away, except for that.
Hold up, everybody. Hold up, everybody. Mr. Cavais, go ahead.
You take away, you have lot one.
Mm-hmm.
You divide, you subdivided.
Yep.
Parcel it out. The one thing you leave is this one little foot lot.
Yep.
Which, hey, because you didn't sell it. And so whoever owned lot one back then, when the subdivision was made, the plan was made, was, is the owner.
Okay, but who pays taxes on that? I just want to know.
It would be the guy who never let go of it.
All right, and is it anywhere in the city records that he owns lot one?
No.
Then, then I could transfer a property anytime I wanted to, split it up and take 60 feet and just say, I own it still, not pay taxes on it?
You own, you own your lot right now.
Yep.
You sell it to me, but you retain.
Yep.
One, going all the way up the length of the property.
I hear you.
You own that still.
Yeah.
I don't.
But who pays taxes?
Well, you pay taxes to that little piece, I suppose.
So I'd have to register with the city?
That's an assessor's question. But that's what the assessor does.
Right, right. So, I mean, I just want to make sure this piece, this lot one, is really lot one and it's real. It's just not on a piece of paper someone did and, and then they just never did anything? That's all I'm saying. Where's the paperwork to prove all of this?
I'm not very comfortable with this either.
No, I know, I'm not either. I, I, I'm not comfortable with who owns what, where, and deeds and, uh, wow.
So, Mr. Aikens, if, if I could just interject, right? If we remove lot six out of the conversation for a moment, right?
Yep.
And we focus in on parcel one and our addition going on that side. We, lot six was never being, there's nothing I'm going to do on lot six. Let's all be clear. Nothing is going to happen there. There's nothing that can be done. I'm concerned about parcel one and the addition on that side.
I know you are, but I'm concerned about a private way, a public way, and lot six right now. Who owns these?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that we had a survey done by a certified land surveyor and they did, you know, professional due diligence. And this is the only thing that we have to go by and it says private road on it.
Right.
We have not seen any, anything to suggest to us that it's not a private road.
All right.
But that raises the question of this, if it's a private road, who owns that?
Private way, right? And, and in the, in parcel one, in parcel one's deed actually states to the center line of the private way.
Right. And so what you want is the center line of the other direction, too. So you basically want the whole private way.
No. Nope.
No, he's only going halfway, saying the private way, you're going to go halfway?
I'm not even touching the private way again.
I, I understand that. But you can use up to half of it, you're saying?
Yeah, well, I would have, I, I currently have, today, I have, with the, the current parcel I own, I have rights into that. This parcel one would complete that one side of the, the rights. And then lot six was just to give the other, the other side of the rights.
You, I thought you didn't buy parcel one yet.
They're both under, they're.
Agreement.
Under agreement.
You haven't bought them yet.
They're under, with contingency on.
Everyone else, just listen to me and tell me if I'm out of my mind. What I'm thinking about now is this. If you have use of the private way from your common property in parcel one, then it goes to tell me that if you take lot six, you have the other half of the public way.
That's right.
Public way of the way, whatever the way is. So that means you really are coming here, you're really wanting.
Right, right, right.
Take the whole, public, the whole way.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you're right. And here's, here's what, here's what I'm saying. Here's what I'm saying. We went through this on, on Oswald Street. People saying they both use half the street and they've always used half the street. And it's, and it's a private way. It wasn't. It was, it was a public street. Someone had to end up moving. Uh, when they, when they figured this all out, they had to move their shed.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that case.
And it's a street, right, that nothing could be on. So this is another thing. I, you know, we, we keep hearing private, private, and then we're saying somewhere, uh, the counselor said that it's really the city owns that street to go down to the, to the, to the, to the bay or the, it's nothing now, but 100 years ago, I don't know when they had walls down there. Mr. McCarthy, go ahead.
Um, just, I, I went, because we started off with this months ago, with the private-public. And when the last time I came out of Public Works, Mr. Chin in Public Works, who does a heck of a job engineering, um, came out with it as a public way. Now, those recent Norfolk County deed documentations, we got said private way. So I was still confused if it was public or private. It says private, but he was adamant it was a public way. So that's what Mr. Timmons and I went with.
Mr. McCarthy, if I, if I could, right, I think you're referring to the, to the Norman Pond or Norman Park that Mr. saying pulled up. We went back all the way to that time and looked at those deeds as well. And even in those deeds, it accepts that piece of land. It doesn't even talk about that. And it calls it unnamed street and continues to refer to it as a private way. We also went back to a street widening map from 1912, which reflects to it as a private way. I'm happy to enter in those so folks can see, if you'd like.
I, I know what, I know what I'd feel comfortable, Mr. Pinto, and, and I hate to do this and give us two weeks. I thought this was all going to be, you had everything we needed. And after hearing the counselor saying he was adamant that is a Quincy street, I really, I really got a, I wouldn't feel comfortable tonight unless I know that's a private street, not a public street.
And also, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if it's a private street, who owns it?
Yeah.
Someone has to own it. If it's a paper street that is a, a public way, private truck, it's owned by the city. If the city doesn't own it, who does?
So.
Yeah.
On the deed for parcel one, it distinctly says to the halfway point of the private way.
But my question is, why would it be that way?
So he has half.
I'm a private citizen. I own that land. You're not going to take half of my land. It has to belong to somebody or some entity.
We, we've.
I think that entity is going to be the city. It does say public way here of this plan. It says paper street on another one. Uh, paper street belongs to the city unless I'm wrong. But I can be. I have been.
Yeah.
I mean, we had the, we've had the situation here. I mean, I had it down at the end of life. There was a big argument that the city had to get involved with it as well. You know, I mean, it's a similar thing. Private way that owners have used land, but it's really.
Yeah, that's what happened in Oswald Street.
Could I, could I make a request? Can, can we? Can we table this for 10 minutes and Dave, can you call me? So we can chat real quick, apparently, and, and try to come to, because I, I understand, Dave, that, that you've been, you know, fostering for, for, for the other side of the neighborhood, right?
I have, I don't think anyone's fostering. I think he's trying to, he was trying to get an agreement with everyone there, make everybody happy about fences and all that. But that's not the issue right now. That's not our issue as a board. Our issue as a board is what I'm asking you. Can we do this in two weeks? I'll make sure, I'll go out and do all the work that I got to do and go there and I'll pull up every document I can find. I'll sit with the city. I'll sit with the assessor. Someone's got to own this property and pay something. That's all I want to know before I go.
I'm, I'm happy.
Who's to say in 20 years from now, the city owns this and they want to put a street in there? And you got, your, your house is two feet from the street.
Yeah.
That's, that would bother me.
Understood, and I'm happy.
If a cloud's coming around and your house is two feet away.
Understood. Respect, respect that. And I'm, and I'm happy to provide you, like I said, I, I've gone and done extensive months of research.
All right.
We, we all.
I'd love to go down and grab all that stuff with you and sit with you. And then I'll go back up to the city and see what we can get there. But I need you to ask for the continuance because I've already done this. It would have to be you.
Yeah, I mean.
I can, I can just, just ask to put it off for two weeks. Let us all do our homework. Dave, I'll catch up with you, go up to the city. Anyone, Mr. Cavais, who want to sit in? Anyone on the board want to come up there? And let's, let's use our brains and find out what's going on with the street. Yes, Mr. McCarthy?
And Chairman, thank you. There's no fostering or anything with the other side. My whole thing is just to square this unique little typical Housneck um, mystery land that I've run into before, but never a spite line. Um, and try to figure out where you guys can put that fence, Mr. Pinto. And we're going to leave it alone so both the cul-de-sac and your addition all happen and that corner cleans up. And that's wonderful. But I'm confused, as Mr. Cavais was saying, somebody owns it. And we get into this private-public, someone documented it private, someone documented it public. We talk about Nordstrom Park back there, Man at Lake. You know, different things back in the ni, early 1900s. And I want to make sure I get it right so that the cul-de-sac isn't impacted and you make out with your addition. And that's been my whole task the last four months, I think, we've been going through. I also need you and Mr. Markarian and Mr. Chin and the guys on the other side of the fence to get together and talk and not make calls every three weeks and I didn't get you. Go around the fence or have them come around the fence. And you guys got to figure it out. We can get this done.
So, with all due respect, Mr. McCarthy, I've attempted on numerous occasions, Mr. Aikens, I didn't want to interrupt you. I'm sorry, I know you're trying.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I've attempted on many occasions to reach out to the neighbors. I, I think there's two points that we're trying to, we're trying to cut slivers here, right? Is it the fence or is it the private way? We, we got.
I'm worried about the, I'm worried about the private way. I don't care about the fence. You guys will figure that out whenever, who owns the property.
Exactly. I, I agree on that.
I'm worried about both. I'm worried about the, the right answer on the private-public way and I'm worried about where that fence ends up because I want to make sure that that area is fairly divvied up and the city, again, the city could go in in the private way, if public way, and put our own fence up on both sides and make it a right-of-way if we want to do. But we don't want to do that. We want you and the boys on the other side of the fence to come to an agreement and figure it out.
Yeah, I, I, I've made my attempts, Mr. McCarthy. I'm, I'm not sure how I, how I enforce other sides of participants.
Mr. McCarthy, if you could, if you could get a meeting, meeting with everybody, just call all participants, whatever we got there and say, we want to have a sit-down this day. And we'll have the documents and stuff probably by then, if you could do it in a week or so.
Okay.
Mr. O'Brien?
Right. I'm asking for a chain of the deeds back, as far back as they go to the subdivision, for parcel one and for the major parcel. The complete chain of deeds back. That's legitimate, right, Mike? Because that'll show ownership.
Mr. Cavais?
You got it.
Well, Mr. Cavais, what do you think of that?
Well, I, I think that, I'm not sure if that's going to be the answer to the question. I, I don't know if that's going to really answer the question as to who owns the way.
But it, it'll tell you if there's rights in the road itself. Because it'll say that this parcel has a right in here to halfway and the other side. It'll, it'll, it'll tell you that in those. Or it'll tell you when they laid the road out at the subdivision. If you have the deed chain there, it'll tell you.
I know. I think, though, the problem is that the way was established before the subdivision. The way was probably established over 100 years ago.
Yeah.
Right.
There still should be deeds. Yeah, there. I, I have all those deeds, Mr. O'Brien, and I'm.
Hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up, Mr. Pinto, please. Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Cavais were talking. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Well, I, I would like to see a survey done now. I would like to see a title report by someone who does title reports. And I know that costs money, but it's, um,
Yeah, but.
I would also, I would also like to see solicitor to tell us what his opinion is. And Dave can help us with that. Uh, you know, he's already, the counselor's already spoken to the solicitor about this. And if I understand, Counselor, the solicitor's of the opinion that this is a public way.
Yes.
There has to be a document.
Yeah, it's got to be, someone that got to own it. Someone has to own this, someone.
So, just to jump in on Charlie's comment, I think we're going to end up seeing a private way document and we're going to see a public way document. And that's the part that, that was the spin.
Then you, then you're going to have to figure this out with the participants in that, if it's, if it's public. I mean, if it's private. But I think somewhere down there, this, there's a lake down there. But I think somewhere down there, this, there's a lake down there, somewhere down there, 100 years ago, there was a lake. And they wanted a road there and they wanted rights for the neighbors to get down there.
Right. And Mike, um, I remember Kovayas made the great point on, again, the bottom line is probably gonna end up being city-owned, city-land. But it is private and there is a big question mark if private is the way you go and if then you go public. And that, Mr. Timmons and I went and looked at that and, and it showed public. So we've got some conflicting, got some conflicting.
Yeah.
Not a good answer.
So, uh, well, I'll meet, I'll meet with them and I'll, I'll meet with Mr. Pinto and get anything he has and bring that up to him. And I'll meet with you, Dave, and whoever else wants to come up. I know, uh, Mr. Kovayas, that's your forte. Uh, if you wanna take a spin up with me, get a meeting. I know it's a pain, but, uh.
Marty, can I just, can I just jump in and just?
Yes.
Just for clarification purposes for me.
Yep.
So, the issue that we have, basically, because the issue, I mean, let's hypothetically, let's say lot six never exists, right? And this, this is just parcel one.
Right.
Well, it's just parcel one and Mr. Pinto is just trying to do his addition on parcel one. Our issue with the public street is essentially that it, at some point, could become a true streeting if that's a lake again, and that you're concerned that we're building too close to a public entity.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two feet, yeah, I think so.
And that, that's all they're trying to figure out, is if, if we just, if.
Now, if that's a private way, if it's private and, and they own that, someone owns this, then they can do what they want with it. And we could figure this out and just make it land and it's done. But I'm hearing it's a public street. Now, if it's a public street and the city owns it, we gotta, we gotta know that. We gotta know that, we gotta say, okay, someday this could change, what do you wanna do?
And Council, is that?
Do I think it will? No, I don't. But is it up to us to make those decisions? What's gonna happen? No, I don't think it is, no.
Council.
You're trying to build something, you'd like to know, Mr. Redell, that's all I'm saying, yeah.
No, no, I get that. I just got a question for Dave.
Yeah.
Dave, did, in, in any of your conversations with, with, with the solicitor, is there like an opportunity here for the neighbors to come together like you're talking about? To just say, hey, look, if, if we just deem this as a private way today, you know, and go forward basis, let's not worry about what we did 250 years ago. If we deem it a private way today and they come up with an agreement where Mr. Pinto can build his addition and, and the neighbors can still have the access that they have today. Did, did, did Solicitor Timmons feel like that, that, that's a potential solution for us moving forward?
Yeah.
I think that all could be talked about. Exactly, that would all be talked about.
Because it sounds like if you don't do that, you're just gonna end up in land court, fighting over this for the next three to five years.
Exactly, and that's what I wanted to talk to City Solicitor, is there any things? Because we've sold streets that were like that. You know, streets aren't gonna be used and they're not even taxed. Why not, why not split them up between the neighbors? Let them take the piece of land, they get a big yacht each. It happened on, on, uh, Road Street, it's happened on a lot of streets.
Okay.
Piece of land is doing nothing.
Jim and I beat it up pretty good in regards to your question and exactly what Marty said. To try to just take this odd piece of land with this extra foot parcel and make it work. So that when, if Mr. Pinto leaves and Mr. Markarian and Mr. Chen leave and move on, it'll be.
Have an agreement, right?
Yeah, and it won't be a mess for the next people that, you know, come in. Do I own this strip? And how far is my fence? We're, we're just trying to clean it up with the understanding that that public way, you know, will be there, just like other public ways are down the neck. You know, they're, some of them are really well-maintained, but they keep them open like they should.
And I, and I, and I, and I don't, I, I, I don't mean to belabor the point again, but I, I do get what, like, like, if we vote on this thing tonight, hypothetically, and we pass it, good luck, you're gonna be in court. Like, it's like, it, it, it's, it's almost, it's better to, it's better to try and figure this thing out, which is why we're asking for the extension, so we can.
I understand, Mr. Redell. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll request that, right? I just want to, to last just add one more point.
Sure.
That parcel one was conveyed by the city of Quincy in, I believe, 1954 to the Archdiocese.
1954, okay.
And when they did that, they referred to it as a private way. So the city has on record called it a private way.
Okay.
Michael, wouldn't the, wouldn't the title examiner pulling an abstract be able to divine what has actually gone on here since 1954?
Yeah.
And Mr. Kovayas, I.
Well, yes, I believe they would, yeah. I mean, if I look back 50 years on this parcel, let's see what has happened in the past.
John, I, I used to do this. I mean, I, I was pulling up the deeds and everything. And when I dove through it, I got all the way back to 1855. It looks like around that time, they started selling off a number of parcels' land, whether it was accessed or whether it was rights. And, and when you get into that, it looks like this portion was just never deeded anywhere. I don't know if that.
That's true, that the owner of that parcel is the city.
City of Quincy, that's what I was gonna say. It's gonna default, it's the same thing as lot six, it's gonna default back to the prior ownership. Now, you know, that's why I'm saying it's gonna get tied up in land court, because somebody's gonna come in and access this property this way for X number of years. And good luck, you're gonna have, you're gonna have squatters' rights essentially.
Yeah, well, the other thing that Mr. Pinto should be worried about is that, you know, if he's gonna sell this eventually, doesn't he have clear title?
That's right.
Property, that's not my problem, that's Mr. Pinto's problem, there may not be a problem, I'm just saying that.
Right, right, right. Exactly, with, yeah.
To your last point that you had asked, a, a title search was conducted on this. And the determination from the title search was that it is a private way. The same as the surveyors that have all surveyed it for the last 20-plus years, have all determined that it was a private way.
But they never determined who owned it.
They, they determined a private way and then.
But, 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 but my driveway's a private way, I know I own it.
They, they determined private way with ownership to the halfway point by parcel one. And then the same would be the same on, on the other side.
And if that's true, that sounds an awful lot like a public way, a paper street, which is owned by the city.
Right, you get halfway rights and there's nothing.
You have rights.
Uh, okay, okay. Mr. Kovayas, everybody, I think, I think, I think we get to the point where we, we know what we want. And, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Pinto, for putting this off for two weeks to, uh, the 23rd. And we should have an answer by the 23rd, I would hope. Uh, or something figured out. And how's that, Mr. McCarthy?
Wonderful.
Thank you. Uh, is everyone okay with that in the board?
Yeah. So, if you mentioned we would meet up, do you, uh, do you have a, do you wanna let me know what that is, so I can make sure I'm around?
Hey Marty?
Yeah.
One thing else, can we pull the decision on, uh, on the subdivision of this lot by the?
Yes.
Okay? Because I'd like to see that this, that when we, when we did this, that we just left this sliver of land out there.
Yep. Yep. I'll get that. Uh, yeah, I know, I remember, I, I was looking at that property, it's funny you say that. I don't know if I could live in a record, I should, I don't know, I don't know if it'd allow me to. Hope the big guy has good things, I don't know, I think he does, but who knows? Anyway, uh, I will, and Mr. Pinto, uh, I have your phone number on record here, I don't wanna throw it out in the air. Uh, I'll give you a call and we'll, uh, I'll give you a call tonight and find out a good time you can meet.
Yeah, you have last, last five, or our last four is 5319, is that what you have?
5299, let me look.
I can just send you a text direct, I can send you a message here directly as a chat and you'll have it.
No, I only have the architect's phone number.
Alright, uh.
Can you email me, Mr. Pinto?
I just sent it to, uh, Mr. Akins directly in chat.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Mike, can you give me that phone number off chat that he just sent?
It'll come. And if, if not, I'll stop by your house and just leave a message in your mailbox, my phone number.
Yeah, I'm here, you can knock the door, I'm here.
Alright. Alright, can we make a motion, uh, the applicant wants to move this for two weeks and then the 23rd, Mr. Reyes, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the matter number 20-88, Paul Pinto, LaVereaux's construction addition of the premises number 1026 C Street. I make a motion to continue the hearing to March 23rd.
Second.
Uh, can we have a voice, I mean, a roll call vocal?
Yes, Mike Kovayas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Uh, I'll talk to you, Counselor.
Yes, sir.
We'll all talk to you. Thank you very much for your time. Hanging in, Counselor, for everybody. Further on to tonight's agenda. Under, uh, C Street, we get C Street tonight? No.
That was C Street.
Quarry Street.
Quarry Street.
Next month. Quarry Street. Is there anyone here? What the hell is this place? How weird it goes, here it goes, someone here. Further on to tonight's, uh, new business, EBA 213. Malcolm Barber, manager, Baker Court LLC, for finding, various, demolish the existing non-conforming two-family house and construct three duplex townhouses, six units. Number 339, 341 Quarry Street. The applicant, the representative here, that was, that was, uh.
Good, good evening, Chris, Christopher Carroll is here.
Hey, hey, Chris, I always see your jaw.
Okay.
Yeah, here it comes, thank you.
Thank you.
You're up.
Good, good evening, everyone. Uh, Christopher Carroll for the applicant, Mal- Malcolm Barber. This is a, essentially a reinstatement of a previous zoning decision, Z 1815. Last, uh, April 25th, 2018, the zoning board rendered a decision in regard to this project. Unfortunately, the applicant, uh, time went by and the applicant was not aware of the fact to request an extension in a timely fashion. So we reached out to the, uh, building officials and the building department. Thought the best thing to do was basically to reinstate the previous decision through a new zoning application, which we did. Uh, before I go any further, I wanted to mention, we also have a active planning board decision that has been, uh, extended till December 2021. So tonight, it's the same application as 2018. We, we've advertised, we've talked to, uh, we've sent out a notice to a butters via the certified list. I reached out to Counselor Kane, he responded and thanked me for updating him. So, uh, that's where we are tonight. And we're just asking for the reinstatement. We'll get a new number and hopefully you'll accept it and we'll be able to record and go on.
Mr. Carroll, this is a brand-new case as far as we're concerned. You're gonna start the beginning, you're gonna tell Square 40 what you're doing, who's building it, architect goes through the plans. There's people here that haven't heard this, maybe.
Okay.
Brand-new plan and it's not up to us just to redo. I just can't let the board, they wouldn't want to do that.
Okay, that's fine. It's, it's in a, the existing conditions is it's 18,450 foot, 18,400, 541 square foot lot. And there's presently a non-conforming two-family house there. And the goal is to take down this structure and create three duplex townhouses on the site. The number of dwelling units will be a total of six. So we're, we're looking for, um, relief in the use regulations and in addition, parking on the premises. That's the two areas that we're looking for relief. It's, it's mirror-like, as I said, and I understand totally, um, in regard to, you know, what you speak. You want the whole new package to be submitted. We have architectural drawings that were submitted in 2018 that were put with the project through, uh, through the architect.
Alright, you wanna put them on the screen, let the people see what you got?
Uh, I don't have the ability to put them on the screen, I did submit it in the package.
There's people that, can we get it up on the screen, Mr. Duke, like, you know, this is the applicant. I mean, these, these are things he's supposed to do, not us, I know.
No, I under, I understand.
No one, you know, renderings, all this stuff, there's people, it's a brand-new case, Mr. Carroll. You know, it's not just, we just can't, people have to see what we're voting on. Everything's, you know, we don't, we want everyone that's online that's here for this case to see exactly what's gonna be built. Have some renderings of this place, what, what it's gonna look like. And, uh, I don't know.
Okay.
Get them up there, hold on one minute, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you.
Maybe he can go in and look at them, this, uh, this is two, this is two, this went, this went in front of the board twice. This went in front of the board twice. I thought I had a decision here in, uh. Huh? 1815 and then there was, uh, another one, there's another, uh. And the rendering is, you know, I know that. Yeah, 1815 again, I just, it's in here twice, I don't know why.
We're bringing that up.
Uh, no, thank you, I just, uh. You know, it's funny, the reason I don't remember it, I wasn't on.
Really? I wasn't, I look and I go, I don't remember.
Everyone else here is on it, was on it.
Yes, yes, so. Where are we? I don't know, I don't know, probably, I don't know, maybe I was in a room, I don't know. Those are the good old days when you go somewhere.
I remember.
Stuck in a house, yeah, I know.
This was the one that backs up to the cliff?
Correct, yeah. It's a two-family, it's a two-family that's going to be demolished and it backs up to the cliff on Quarry Street, correct.
Weren't they using it as a sober house at one point?
I'm not aware of that, it, it's a vacant structure at this point.
I think it was.
I think it was.
Yeah, it was a sober house.
I think it was. Behind that, uh, that, that motor place there.
Yeah, uh, just a little history, uh, Mr. Barber took on the, uh, permits that were granted for Mr. Dwyer that, in the zoning decision. So he took it and then his only remaining task was to go to the planning department and receive a planning board decision.
Did he?
Yes, he did, and it's still active, the planning board decision that was issued in 2019.
And that's good till September, you said, right?
No, uh, excuse me, it's, it's, it's good till December, we've extended it.
December, okay.
Correct. So that's what matters.
I just wanted people to take, uh, and, because I can't remember what it was gonna look like. I, I don't see any renderings there. I didn't know if you had any renderings.
There, there is, there are renderings, I'm sorry that, uh, it's not up on the screen. It's, uh, the three duplex, duplex townhouses. And it was, uh, designed by Chu and Company.
Yeah, I just don't have them in, why aren't they in the application?
I did, uh.
Kovayas, O'Brien, Chen, Redell and Himmel, alright.
I did, I did scan them with the application, uh, Mr. Akins, but I don't have them on placards to present tonight.
I, you have them, yes, because I don't have them in my package.
I have them in my package, Mr. Chairman.
You do?
I did.
Yeah, I have them as well.
Renderings, the pictures of it, oh.
I have them too.
Oh, oh, and the big piece, I thought it was in the, I was looking in the back of the other one to see it. These are just.
A two.
Together in a one?
Excuse me, sir?
You got one standing alone and then two together?
Yes.
You got two on one side, one on the other, alright.
Yeah, they're all standing alone, only three of them.
Yes, three duplex townhouses.
No, no, he's got, he's getting it up on the screen now.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Yeah, can everyone see that, guys?
I can see everything but your, your head, Marty.
My head, yeah, well, yeah, head's in there. Uh, I see you, only one I can see, what happened here? Hold on. Here I am. Yeah, I see. Uh, Kovayas, you wanna run with this? You five guys did this before, you know exactly what's going on in there.
Yeah, I, I think what we were looking at at the time is, uh, as, uh, Counselor will tell us, that this area has, uh, a class practically. And we thought that the house that was there was already, uh, not supposed to be there because it's the residence A. And this was our big exception, I think, to, uh, say, listen, this is better, next to another townhouse, it's next to a repair shop.
Yep.
I think that's what we were thinking back at the time, though I'm not gonna speak for everybody else.
No, 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 I'm, do you wanna run with it? Is some, you five guys, you wanna, wanna take over the meeting and run with it? Or you can, right?
Sure, sure.
Because you guys, five guys did it, why don't you just go right over it again? It'll probably be easier than me getting in there. Uh, you guys are very well capable.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Carroll. Just give us a quick kinda, the board members have seen this before, but it's been a few years.
Okay, again, thank you. Uh, the applicant, again, as, as was demonstrated, was in a, it's basically an abandoned home, a non-conforming, abandoned two-family home. And they, they proposed to build the three new duplex condominiums consisting of six residential units with six garage parking spaces and 12 outdoor parking spaces, tandem spaces for a total of 18 parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage and other site modifications. The property is, uh, 18,000 plus square feet of land and it's located, again. again, at three thirty-nine through three forty-one Quarry Street. The property is located, as, uh, a member, Cavais stated, a Residence A district. So, uh, we, again, uh, there was, there was concerns at that time about, you know, uh, site, a wind and shadow study and planning was waived and there was a cold traffic study done to, um, to ensure that there'd be no public health and safety issues, so.
They come right up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, gentlemen, I can't see everybody.
Second.
Okay.
I know, if you could, if you can get rid of that screen so we all can see each other now. We all set with the screen? Thank you. Just the screen so we can get back to the people's places. There we go. Mr. Cavais, you're all set. Should come right up.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have questions, Mr. Raydell?
Uh, no, I remember this case. I remember the lot is, you know, the oddly shaped, I think that they had designed it well and, and we were concerned about on-street parking, I remember, which had got one...
Can I say one thing before you?
Um, you know, so I, 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 I remember, you know, the use was, was about the best we were gonna see on, on, on a parcel of land like this.
Uh, Mr. ...
Yeah.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions at this time.
Mr. Himmel?
Uh, no questions. I do remember there was gonna be some substantial blasting, though. Is that still it? Are, are they gonna, uh, take that hill down by blasting? Are they gonna chip it down?
Well, I, I can't specifically speak to that issue, but that's something that we defer to for the building department, whatever requirements they set. Uh, we're going, we're going to go through the protocol for the demolition of the home and of course, we'll defer to what, um, Mr. Duca and his team wishes. It is quite a rocky site and the other issue too, of course, the traffic issue, we'll have to do it in a manner that we don't impact, you know, ongoing traffic. So if you, if you wish, we can follow whatever directions, but I think they're the subject matter experts on, uh, what manner we do it in.
I know, it does talk about that, Mr. Cavais, in here. Evidence and testimony that was presented talked about that. Uh, so they're gonna have to answer that. But Mr. Duca wanted to get in if he could. Mr. Chairman, talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just wanted to, um, just let the board know that I met with the attorney. He done his due diligence. Uh, wanted to let the board know that none of the building codes or zoning codes have changed since you initially approved this. The problem, uh, any, they do have a valid, um, uh, decision still from the planning board. And this is a decision that this board made in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, as far as the blasting, there is new technology today that uses hydraulics. Uh, I don't know if that might be an option for this, but, uh, whatever they need to do, we will make sure that they get all the proper permits and surveys and anything that needs to be done and remove the rock. Thank you.
So it might be better, Mr. Duca? It might be better now that, um, we've waited a few years, the technology's gotten better for the blasting?
I, I think so, yeah, yeah.
It was a good, good call by the petitioner. Uh, Mr. Chin?
Yes, um, Chris, I had a question for you. I was looking at page two of the plans. It refers to units A and B. On the first page of the plans, where the units are numbered, um, and I just wanna confirm, units A and B have, um, have parking on the first floor, first level, rather, as well as the outside has parking? Is that right?
That's, that's the way, I, you hit it right on point, yes.
Okay, so when they say unit A and unit B, are those referring to styles of townhouse or?
I believe they refer to mo- it's, it's a model. It's a model.
Okay. So in addition to the spaces, the parking space is shown on the first page of the plans, there is also parking inside of these units. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody wanna speak in favor? Favor of this? Once, twice, three times? Anybody, um, any correspondence?
No comment from the DPW.
Okay, great. Anybody wanna speak opposed or on the side? Opposed or on the side?
Why don't you just do?
Once, twice,
I don't see any, yeah.
Bill, okay?
So, I, I live on, uh, one city view lane and my only question is, will there be enough parking off-street so that they don't park on-street on top of newly painted bicycle lanes or whatnot that have been, uh, added as part of the, um, Avalon mitigation?
Hello, Mr. O'Neill. Absolutely, that was a concern with the planning department. And there is a, a parking plan with, uh, actually more parking than if the existing structure would to remain. So we have plenty of parking on place and I had, I'll gladly read it into the record again, what we'll have for parking, if you'd like.
Sixty-six, lots, basically, and they're all, they're all specifically deeded is what it looks like, Mr. Carroll. Is that correct?
Correct, right, correct. They go with the unit and, uh, I can tell you exactly what it is. I'll take the planning decision, hit it right on point, so we'll get it right here. One second. Uh, let's see, eighteen, okay, here we, here we go, Mr. O'Neill. The applicant, uh, it's, it's the structures and it'll consist of three garage, uh, excuse me, six garage parking spaces and twelve outdoor surface tandem parking spaces for a total of eighteen spaces. So, um, applicant, and again, it will be fully landscaped. So I, I, I believe that will be sufficient. We weren't looking for, you know, any more or any less. So eighteen spaces.
Works for me, I think.
That far exceeds our requirement, Mr. O'Neill. So, you know, we, we'd ask for two per, so we're, we're, we have an additional spot per location, per unit.
Thank you.
Citizen, Citizen Rutherford. I know you're gonna yell at me. Go ahead. You said, by the way, you said, the truth, the whole truth, about the truth?
I do. John Rutherford, sixty-two Grenwell Road, Quincy. Um, I'm in support of this. We, we need, we need new growth. Um, I think I was in support of this before. I'm not sure if this was the building that we didn't like the way it looked or something. I know those one on Quarry Street that we were saying that wasn't a good-looking building, so. Um, but the one thing I would like to ask Mr. Carroll, and I would like him to ask, um, his developer, is that I was just watching the Affordable Trust Meeting earlier today and one of the things that we need is, we need affordable housing. Now, the planning department isn't forcing you to do one of these units as affordable because the Affordable Housing Law that we currently have in Quincy is one out of ten units. If, uh, we need to do ten units, but you're doing six. The way I look at it is that if you had developed this six years, I mean, two years earlier, prices have gone up a lot. So it would be really nice if they would designate one of these units as affordable and sell it as affordable and just do something very altruistic. You're not forced to do it, but if you did it, it would be a good thing for the city and it would be a good thing for the developer. And if you come back here again, it would be a good thing. So I mean, what we need is developers to do more than what they're expected to do, not just the bare minimum. So I just ask you to ask the developer, cause this is, you know, one out of six. They are changing the rules.
Okay, ask that along. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, all right, all right, everybody. Um, anyone else? No? Call that, once, twice, three times, the clear party here enclosed. Uh, well, I think we would look awfully silly if we decided that coming up a few years we change our minds. So I know I'll be in favor of this. Uh, Brian, without? Charlie, O'Brien?
Did you write this?
Charlie, I'm you.
He's muted.
Who's muted?
Charlie.
Was taking a nap there for a minute and I didn't want you to hear me snoring.
What do you think?
Yeah. I, I agree. I think that it's a good project for that location. I thought it was a good project the first time around, so I'm gonna stick to it.
Mr. Himmel?
I think it's a good project as well, as the remaining property there looks worse than it did two years ago, so I'm in favor.
Yeah, true. Mr. Russell?
I am still in favor.
I mean, Mr. Chin, I'm sorry.
Still in favor of the project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chin. Uh, Charlie, you wanna do a?
Yeah, you would. I don't have it here. Okay, um...
Uh, someone else wanna do a motion?
I gotta, I gotta add. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number ZBA twenty-one dash three, Malcolm Barber, manager, Baker Court LLC for finding and a vari- and variances to demolish an existing nonconforming two-family house and construct three duplex townhouse buildings of six units on the premises number three thirty-nine and three forty-one Quarry Street, I make a motion to grant the requested variance.
Second.
Second, second? Let's do a roll call.
Roll call.
Okay, Charlie O'Brien?
Sean.
Sean Himmel?
Yes.
Brian Raydell?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
You guys are comedians.
Hey, um, before, not, not on this, I, can I ask the attorneys of the board, uh, before we close out this session, a question on, on, uh, T Street? It's more of a, it's more of a general.
Let me tell Mr. Carroll, he's all set.
Mr. Carroll, you're all set.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Cal. Be safe.
It's more of a general question and I think I'm trying to understand it and I, and, and it, so it doesn't, it's not really specific to the case. So I went back and I'll, Marty, I'll send you everything that I did because I went back, so I went back to the decision of two thousand and eight and I, and I looked at all the filings for this subdivision of lot. And when they subdivide this, and I know that the applicant produced a, a document that showed this lot six, when they subdivided and they, and they recorded it, there is no mention of a lot six. There is mention of lots one through five. There is never once a mention of lot six.
That's what I'm saying. He might have done that afterwards.
Yeah, but there's, no, they didn't. There's, there's, I, I went after.
No, no, no. I'm saying they just might have wrote up a plan. He thought of six after he did it and said, I'm gonna keep a footland, but...
Yeah, if you go back, when you pull your zoning decision, Marty,
Right.
There is no mention of lot six in the zoning decision.
Yeah, in the, in the land court decision.
No, in, yeah, in the zoning, in the land court decision, that's not by us. There is nothing. And in fact, it's, it's, it's recorded in the wrong place, Mike, cause it's recorded in, in registered.
Where is it recorded?
It's not, it's not recorded in land court. It's recorded in, it makes no sense, like.
I'm surprised you found that.
Registry in Lynn?
No, registered. So once, once we make a decision on this, Marty,
I couldn't hear him.
Once we make a decision, it moved from registered land to land court. It's where it's supposed to be filed. It's not. It's not filed over there at all, which is, it's, the whole thing is bizarre and they have a huge title issue on their hand. And, you know, if I'm, if I'm the neighbor, I just would hold them up for five years personally.
So it's not with the registry of deeds in Norfolk County?
Hey, guys, we're still in a meeting here. Everybody, everyone's listening.
I know. There are two ways of recording land in Massachusetts. One we call land court or recorded land, registered land. Uh, it's both registry of deeds, but it's something special that goes on. It goes to land court and the decision goes there and it's in that system.
Okay.
And so a subdivision and a, and a, and a zoning decision based on a subdivision of land would typically be right in, in recorded land after, correct, Mike?
I would think.
Right.
Well, if it was coming, it doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be, but if it has come from a decision of the land court, it should be there.
So technically, does Sean Farrell still own that parcel of land?
Yep. Correct.
This is what I'm saying. There is, so, so when he subdivided,
Yep.
there is no mention of this additional lot. That's what I'm confused at. There's no mention of this lot six. So I understand your original point that, okay, I subdivided my land and I just retained this little strip. But there's, there's no mention of it anywhere.
That's what I'm saying. Why wouldn't it be?
That one strip was not conveyed to any one of those parcels that we subdivided. It's just sitting there as is.
Right. It's part, it's...
Or it could be in four and five.
You don't, you, like, if I, if I subdivided my lot today into three parcels hypothetically and I left off a single little back corner of five by five and I, I have lot one, lot two, and my lot three back here, I still have to mention lot three. I still have to tell you, breaking off lot three.
That's what I'm saying. So someone should be paying taxes and it should be in the records here that someone else owns that piece, right?
I, I think what happens is if you go back and you look at the, at the deed that he bought.
Yep.
All right, and he sold pieces out of the deed, whatever he retained goes back to the deed that he, the original deed that he bought.
So it belongs to the diocese.
Those pieces don't, it doesn't make any difference. He can call it whatever he wants, when he wants. He doesn't have to delineate a number on it or anything, cause it's still, he still holds title on the original deed that he had.
So who owns it, though, if he sold them all off except for one little piece? Doesn't, so does the Archdiocese own that?
No, he, he still owns it. Farrell owns it. He just never sold it. Michael, is that as, as a remainder? It, it's kinda, but it's, it's the deed.
Isn't there supposed to be?
It goes back to the deed reference. The deed reference, when he transfers that to the guy, will be the original deed that he bought from the Archdiocese. And then they can, they could, no, I'm saying Farrell.
I know, but...
Farrell's deed.
No, parcel one is, is separate. Parcel one never owned lot six.
No, no, I'm talking about the strip.
I understand that. That's lot six of this subdivision plan, Charlie. So he buys, he buys this twenty-five thousand square foot lot, whatever it is. You know, and you go and you, and then he, and it, and it's, it's showing when he buys it as lot one and lot two. And then he takes lot one and lot two and he comes to the zoning board and he says, I'm gonna survive, subdivide this into five buildable lots.
That's what he did.
And he names, yes, correct. He names those lots one through five.
Right.
And now, all of a sudden, out of thin air,
That's what I'm saying.
Lot six, which I understand...
We would ask them about that. We all would ask them.
No, it's not, it's not out of thin air. It's in this plan that, that...
Yeah. And, and it's the re- it's the remainder from the original subdivision.
No, it was in a plan that was never shown, though. That's...
It doesn't matter. He, he doesn't have to show a plan. He shows the plans of the ones that were taken out and whatever's left over, that's what he owns.
I'm, I'm gonna pull this case tomorrow.
Yeah, we gotta look at this whole thing this week, uh, Mike, I'll give you a call. We can meet. Anyone else wanna go up and sit with the city solicitor? I can see if I can get an appointment this week.
I'm just fascinated by it, so I'd love to, because I love, I love nonsense like this that happens.
Sean Farrell has a case on the twenty-third, if you wanna get him. Just saying.
I'll tell you, whoever did that, whoever left that foot,
Oh, he's gonna be in it with the other.
He's pretty sharp at what they did.
Washington Street on.
They're, they're very sharp. Either the, the surveyor or the con- or the conveyance or the attorney to hold that piece adjacent to that street. That's a, that's a wise, wise, tricky man that did that.
That would be the little leprechaun himself.
All right.
Well, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor, voice vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Close, close. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Y'all got my phone number. You need me. Man, I got yours to hunt yous down.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Bye, everybody.
Night, everybody. Thank you very much.